Ni na shanga, ni kielewa, we we nizaidi, ya vile ni livyo wambi wajuyako, tenasautiyako. Ya nizidia sauti zote, ninazosikia. Ni na shanga, ni kielewa, we we nizaidi, ya vile ni livyo wambi wajuyako, tenasautiyako. Ya nizidia sauti zote, ninazosikia. Yale baba, yale umetena baba, yote ni maku maana wayatenda. Kwa upendo yale umesema, yale umesema baba, yote ni kweli maana pia wayasema. Kwa upendo yale umetena, yale umetena baba, yote ni maku maana wayatenda. Kwa upendo yale umesema, yale umesema baba, yote ni kweli maana pia wayasema. Kwa upendo. Na nimejipata, na niya upendo ako, Nema yako, ya nitho sha, nikiwana we mimi nikuru. Nimejipata baka, na niya upendo ako, Nema yako, ya nitho sha, nikiwana we mimi nikuru. Yale baba, yale umetena baba, yote ni maku maana wayatenda. Kwa upendo yale umesema, yale umesema baba, yote ni kweli maana pia wayasema. Kwa upendo. Baba yale umetena, yale umetena baba, yote ni maku maana wayatenda. Kwa upendo yale umesema, yale umesema baba, yote ni kweli maana pia wayasema. Kwa upendo. Oh, yale umetena, yale umetena baba, yote ni maku maana wayatenda. Kwa upendo. Na yale umesema baba, yote ni kweli maana pia wayasema. Kwa upendo.
Good evening viewers, once again let me welcome you for the Berean Bible Study today. We are very grateful for this wonderful, wonderful evening that God has given to us. Allow me to welcome you and for us to start, I want us to start by giving, by doing an introduction of our names. My name is Pastor Peter Shikuku and in turn Pastor here at Gospel Centers International Central Church. Welcome, let me welcome my sister Beatrice.
Good evening viewers, Beatrice is here, I'm born again, be blessed.
Amen.
Amen, praise God and good evening church and good evening everybody who's following with us this evening. Praise God, it's another evening that God has given us to gather in His presence and learn from His word and we are very excited to be here today. My name is Kalam Bui, I'm a member of GCI Thika Road and I'm glad to be here. God bless you as we learn His word together.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, I'm excited to be here this evening. My name is Godfrey, is here, I'm a member of GCI and I'm excited to be part of this Bible study, God bless you.
Amen.
Good evening and praise the Lord, I am so glad to be here and I welcome all of you. My name is Joyce Mekasingi, GCI Central, Karibuni Sana.
Amen, thank you very much, we are going to start with a word of prayer from Sister Skola.
Let us believe and pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come before your presence once again this wonderful evening. We want to thank you for giving us yet another chance to sit at your feet and learn from your word, oh God. And we particularly thank you for this topic that we are handling today of the Church and Her mandate. Thank you because you've called us, you've called us out to be the Church of Jesus Christ and you've called us into the family of God to accomplish the mission of God, oh God. As we continue studying your word, may you continue giving us insights into the mission work that you've called us to be, to do with even as believers in the name of Jesus Christ. Order our, order us this evening as we share your word in the name of Jesus Christ to pray and we believe.
Amen. So once again, let me welcome you all. We began talking about the Church and Her mandate last week. We are dealing with the Book of Acts and we are very excited that God is speaking to us that the Church of God should understand Her mandate and that is what we are going on with today. And we want to continue, last week we did an introduction of this particular book of Acts and today we want to continue with it. And our main subtopic today is going to be about the Jewish mission as part of Church and Her mandate. And we are going to have readings, our main text coming from the Book of Acts, chapter 1, from verse 6 to 11. I want to ask my sister Beatrice to start us off from verse 6, from verse 6 to verse 11.
Praise the Lord, let me read. Then they gathered round him and asked him, "Lord, are you, Lord, are you at this time going to restore the kingdom to Israel?" He said to them, "It is not for you to know the times or deaths the Father has said by his own authority, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit comes on you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and in all Judea and Samaria and to the ends of the earth." After he said this, he was taken up before their very eyes and a cloud hid him from their side. They were looking intently up into the sky as he was going when suddenly two men dressed in white stood beside them. Men of Galilee, they said, "Why do you stand here looking into the sky? This same Jesus who has been taken from you into heaven will come back in the same way you have seen him go into the heaven." Praise the Lord.
Amen, that is our main text for this particular session, the Book of Acts, chapter 1, verse 6 to 11. But besides that, we also have the Book of Acts, chapter 2, verse 1 to 4 that I will ask Brother Godfrey to read so that we may start, thank you.
Thank you, Acts 2, 1 to 4. When the day of Pentecost arrived, they were all together in one place. And suddenly there came from heaven a sound like a mighty rushing wind and it filled the entire house where they were sitting. And divided tongues of fire appeared to them and rested on each one of them. And they were filled with the Holy Spirit and began to speak in other tongues as the Spirit gave them utterance. Thank you.
Amen, so just as I had said before, we are talking about the Jewish mission and we are going to look at three particular areas under the Jewish mission. The first area we are going to start with is what we call the Pentecost. Many a times, dear viewers, you might have heard people talking about Pentecostal churches. We need to understand the origin of Pentecost, we need to understand what happened in Jerusalem. As we have all read, we have seen from the Book of Acts, chapter 1 and verse 8 specifically talking about, "You will receive power when the Holy Spirit comes upon you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and in all Judea and Samaria and to the atom or the end of the earth." So there is an instruction that Jesus Christ had given to His disciples. They were waiting in Jerusalem, they had waited, they had 50 days of Passover just waiting and the Holy Spirit of God had been promised to come upon them. So our first area under the Jewish mission is about the Pentecost. Now I want to ask my panelists, just to give us a brief introduction of the Pentecost Day. If anyone has something to say about Pentecost, I'll be glad to have you speak.
Okay, I would say that on the day of Pentecost is when we, when the world witnessed the first outpouring of the Holy Spirit and this happened in Jerusalem as Pastor Shikuku has said. And believers were just gathered somewhere, the Bible says in an upper room and they were just there waiting on God and praying and that is when we see the promise of the Holy Spirit released for the first time in the Bible. And the Bible clearly says that all the people that were present were filled with the Holy Spirit.
That is very true, as she said and this is one thing that we are emphasizing that the first outpouring happened in Jerusalem. And during this particular time, that is when the Holy Spirit of God that had been promised by the Lord Jesus Christ to the disciples, God had instructed, Jesus had instructed them not to leave until they were endowed with power. And that power we are talking about is the power of the Holy Spirit. And I want to bring to our attention that in those times, there were three feasts that every male in Israel needed to celebrate. And these feasts, we need just to name them so that you understand, Pentecost being one of them. And when we talk about Pentecost, we are saying that Jews used to call it Feast of Harvest or Feast of Weeks. Do we have any other feast that was being celebrated during that particular time?
Okay, thank you. I think while at Pentecost, it's important for us to remember that Pentecost is a Greek word, but the feast started in the Old Testament with a Jew and it used to be called Shavvot. And this was the time they used to celebrate the harvest and they used to remember the law that was given to Moses in Mount Sinai. So many of the, many of the Jewish feasts are around harvest time and that's how they loved it. So Pentecost is a Greek word and Pent means five and it was used at that particular time to remember the 50 years, 50 days after the Passover. Yeah, so by saying that, I will say the next feast that they celebrated was the Passover which commemorates the story of the Israelites' departure from the ancient Egypt. Yeah, thank you.
Amen, do we have another one? Any other feast that was celebrated by the Israelis, Beatrice?
It was the Feast of the Tabernacle.
What do you understand with the term Feast of Tabernacle? What does it remind or what was it reminding the children of Israel during that time? Yes, Godfrey?
Yeah, it was a reminder of the temporary terms they used to, terms they used to even in the wilderness as they journeyed towards the Promised Land. I also wanted to say that Jews observed the Passover, it was a week-long festival, yes.
Amen, I think when they talk about tabernacles, if you can remember well when we were talking about worship in the Old Testament, we talked about tabernacle and it is still, it was still being practiced even in the New Testament. And just as we have said that it was just a reminder of this temporary terms they were using in those days in the wilderness where they were worshiping God as they were journeying in the wilderness. I want to let you know that people gathered in one place and suddenly a sound from heaven like a rushing wind filled the house. We have seen in Acts, chapter 2, that says, "When the day of Pentecost arrived, they were all together in one place." They were all together in one place. In other versions, we are told they were all together in one accord. And when you look at that particular area, it tells you the power of unity in the body of Christ. We are talking about the Church and Her mandate. And that part where there is an outpouring of the Holy Spirit, there is the purpose, the unity of purpose where the disciples of Jesus were in one accord, waiting and as they were doing this in response to what Jesus has told them. Remember, Jesus' word was for them to wait until they were endowed with power from on high. I think we need to understand that instruction coming from the Book of Luke, chapter 24 and verse 49. If somebody can just read it for us so that we understand where was this instruction given to the disciples in the Book of Luke, chapter 24 and verse 49?
Luke, chapter 24, verse 49.
Yes.
"I am going to send you what my Father has promised, but stay in the city until you have been clothed with power from on high."
Wow, stay in the city until you have been clothed with the power from on high. Dear panelists, is there any something, is there something that you can add around that particular area? Jesus is giving instruction to the disciples on what they were supposed to do.
Maybe I can say there is something about obedience. They obeyed His command to remain in Jerusalem until they were clothed with the power of the Holy Spirit. Another thing is that as they were waiting in Jerusalem in the upper room, it shows the importance of fellowship. They were fellowshipping together, praying, and that is when Jesus honored His promise and actually they were able to be clothed with the power of the Holy Spirit.
Wow, yes Pastor?
Yeah, so I just wanted to add something small. When Jesus was promising the disciples at that time that they need to be in one place and wait, actually in Jerusalem and wait for the, for the promise of the Father, which was the Holy Spirit. I think He was, He wanted to let them know that the mission that He has for them is not possible without the power of the Holy Spirit. So it was talking about the missionary motive of God to the people that He had called. And I think it is also talking about the empowerment motive because that is the power that they will use to reach out everywhere and that power they are going to receive on the day of Pentecost is not for them to keep, it is for some work. It's like a tool that you have been given and then you have to go out and use that tool. So that is what I would contribute.
Thank you very much, any other contribution around that area? And if I told the reason, we have all heard from the two speakers or the two panelists that there was the obedience for the disciples, they obeyed God and then they also had fellowship. And as Pastor Joyce has also added, that by them being promised the power, that power was for them to use to fulfill the mission that God had given to them. We must remember that when we are talking about Church, Jesus is very clear, giving instruction even from the Book of Matthew, chapter 28 and verse 18 to verse 20, talking about the Great Commission. So every time we are talking about Great Commission, we must understand that there is power that we need to be clothed with and this power is the power of the Holy Spirit and that is what Jesus Christ had promised the disciples. And during this particular time, we can see that there was divided tongues as fire appeared and rested on each of them. Each spoke in tongues, each spoke in tongues. If you look at Acts, chapter 2 and verse 19 that says, "And I will show wonders in the heavens above and signs on the earth below, and blood and fire and vapor of smoke." We see this one happening during this Pentecost Day that there was a fire that appeared and rested on the disciples on that particular day of Pentecost. So these disciples are getting clothed with the power from on high. Dear viewers, when we want to carry out the mission of God, we need to understand that we need the power of the Holy Spirit. We need to be endowed with the power, we need to be clothed with this power and that power is received when we wait upon the Lord and when we obey our Lord Jesus Christ. And dear members, I don't know whether you still have something to add as far as the Pentecost Day is concerned because I want us to put it in an elaborate way so that people may understand the origin of Pentecost.
Okay, thank you Peter. You know, the scripture that you have just read, it reminds me, or actually it's the prophecy that was given by Joel and when he was promising the Holy Spirit. So I usually, when I see the word of God being fulfilled, like God has given a promise and then it is fulfilled again in scripture. It shows that God has one message.
Wow.
And there is that unified thought from the, from the Old Testament to the New Testament, God's message is the same. Whatever He said in the Old Testament is being fulfilled in the New Testament. So it's very exciting to see the way the Bible is speaking one language. There is no contradiction, there is no controversy in the Bible and we are excited to discover that.
Amen, amen, yes.
Yeah, I would also add that when, when the Holy Spirit came down on the people, we see tongues, there were tongues of fire that rested on each and every person that was baptized with the Holy Spirit. And this was symbolic because it signifies, the fire signified the presence of God and by that indication, it was clear that the Church had been favored or had been honored to be the ones that carried the presence of God with them. And just that the fact that the tongues of fire also fell, also stood on the head, upon the head of each and every person that was there signifying that the people had been also graced and favored to also carry the presence of God with them. And so is us believers today. Once anybody is filled with the Holy Spirit, you proudly, you should proudly carry the presence of God in you and fulfill the mandate that you've been empowered for.
Amen, amen.
Shikuku, sorry for talking too much, but let me add something small. You know, when Skola was talking about the way the fire came to signify the presence of God, remember the Jews used to dwell in Jerusalem and they used to go to Jerusalem and particularly to the temple. They felt that the temple is the presence of God and then if they have to meet God, then they have to go there. And so during this time of Pentecost, the outpouring rested upon each member that was present that day. And this was to remind, to remind us who are reading these texts much later that the Church has been accepted as the body of Christ, as the temple of God. We do not have to go to Jerusalem because the presence of God came upon the believers that were present at that time just to affirm us as the temple of God. So believers, even as we go, as we sit, as we do whatever we do, we should remember that we are carrying the presence of God wherever we are. We are the temple of the Lord.
Amen, dear viewers, this should be very, very informative for all of us that all of us, we carry the presence of God. And when we carry the presence of God, we have seen that when the Holy Spirit came upon the disciples and it rested, He rested on the disciples in form of fire, showing God's presence. And it means that presence was given to each and everyone who was gathered. And when you read around that particular area, it will tell you or you will know that many people came around Jerusalem that particular day because a lot was happening. People were speaking in tongues, people were talking and there was, to other people, it was like a confusion. But we want to tell you and emphasize, it was not a confusion. God, Jesus Christ Himself had communicated this, had promised the disciples and that is what Jesus was fulfilling. And we see that we no longer need to go to Jerusalem, temple to meet the living God. Remember, when you go back to chapter 1 and verse 8 talking about, "You will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and in all Judea and Samaria and to the end of the earth." This was the origin of the disciples of Christ being told that now the mission work is beginning from Jerusalem, but it is not going to stop here, it has to go to other parts of the world. Samaria should receive the word, Judea and at most part of the earth. And remember, that is how even we have received the gospel of Jesus Christ. So you need to be very proud, knowing very well that you are not left. The presence of God that was given on the Pentecost Day, a Pentecostal Day, is still with us to date and is still working in our midst. Yes, Godfrey?
In view of what we have read and what you have said, does that therefore mean that we are now the living temple?
We are the living temple.
Yeah, I was saying that also in view of what our sister read in 1:8, "But you will receive power when the Holy Spirit has come upon you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and in all Judea and in Samaria and to the end of the earth." Does that therefore tell me that as I walk, I'm the living temple?
Sure, you are. Amen, any other contribution?
Pastor Shikuku, you talked about that same Acts, chapter 1, verse 8. And when you were expounding, you said that we should be proud that we have received the same Holy Spirit. And I just wanted to add that receiving only is not enough, but we should now go ahead and continue with the witnessing of the word so that we continue fulfilling the Great Commission that we were given by Jesus Christ, that we will evangelize the whole world because that is what God intends, rather expects us to do.
Amen, amen. So as we continue, I want to say that when the people who were gathering heard the people speak in their native languages, mission to the world, the whole world. And I want to add that we are free to serve God in our native languages. You know, sometimes people struggle a lot in terms of praying and worshiping God. If I am speaking my native language, for example, if I speak Zulu and somebody else is speaking Masai and somebody else is speaking Camba language, we are free to serve God, do not be limited. Even when we all gather in the church and you feel like you just want to speak to God in your native language, you are free to do that because those who had come to gather during this Pentecost Day heard people speak in their native language and this was showing that the mission of God was... And this was showing that the mission of God was going out, it was reaching out to the whole world. And this outpouring is the defining event in the book of Acts. Because I'm just imagining, if it had not happened, then the mission of God that left Jerusalem, the Jews that went up to the Gentiles, would have not happened. So it is an eventful moment in the book of Acts, showing how God was preparing the disciples to get out and reach out even to the unreached, who are the Gentiles, you and I. So we want to continue, and I want us to go to the second particular area, that is spirit-inspired witness, spirit-inspired witness. When I look at this particular subtopic, spirit-inspired witness, I am very excited. Why am I excited? It tells me that we cannot become witnesses of God when we are not spirit-inspired. Could any member have something to add on that? Yes?
Okay, thank you so much, Shikuku. I am very, very excited about the spirit-inspired witness. Why? Because I remember the very first time I joined a missions department in church. I know it shouldn't be a department, but that is how we know it today. When we went out there, I was a coward. I couldn't even approach anybody and tell them about Jesus Christ. It used to bother me a lot how I will stop a stranger and begin to share with them the message of the kingdom. But believe you me, when I was properly prepared by the church, and I was told that it is not about what I will say, but I need to be prepared in terms of the infilling and the baptism of the Holy Spirit, when I knew that that was the starting point. I became a missionary, and even up to today, I don't regret, because I know that for as long as the Holy Spirit is within me, I am able to stop anybody and tell them about the kingdom of our God. So when I was looking at this particular text, and especially what was prophesied by Joel, in Joel, chapter two, when we are talking about spirit-empowered proclamation of the gospel, it involves five things that I would like at this time to mention.
Yes.
Because when we look at the disciples, that's what we see them doing. So it must include the message that Jesus Christ is the Lord and Christ. And number two, the Holy Spirit has been poured out on all believers. You must know that as a believer, the Holy Spirit has been poured out on you. And number three, it should be an encouragement to expect the promised gift of the Holy Spirit. For every witness, you must be encouraged to expect that promise before you do anything, before you witness to anybody. And then it is also carrying the proclamation or declaration that Jesus is coming again, and it should have a conclusion that each one of us has a responsibility to have faith in God and to repent their sins. Thank you so much.
Amen.
Okay, maybe just to add on what Pastor Shikuku had said before we got into the five points of the message of the gospel, is, this was Peter, going back a few chapters back in the Bible, we know that it was the same Peter who had denied Jesus three times, and said, "No, I do not know him," and "No, I do not know him," and the third time again. And at that point, we saw a timid Peter, a Peter who was afraid, not courageous enough to even want to associate with this Jesus. But in these chapters, once the Holy Spirit came and filled the disciples and their apostles and all the people that were gathered in the upper room, we now see a different version of Peter,
Sure.
A Peter who is now bold and courageous, such that when the people are filled, and now they are speaking in different languages and professing and speaking in tongues. And the people around came and wondered, "I'm hearing these people speaking my language." The other one is also wondering the same. And they thought, maybe these people have had too much to drink, and they are drunk, that's why they are speaking in those funny languages. But Peter boldly comes and says, "No, we are not drunk, it is the Holy Spirit that has come upon us." And he there ahead goes and gives the first message that we witnessed after Jesus had departed, coming from the apostles. So again, when the Holy Spirit comes to us, and I like what Pastor Joyce says, that before that she was very afraid, and she could not boldly witness to anyone. So when the Holy Spirit comes on us, we receive some special form of courage and boldness to even share the gospel of Jesus Christ with the world out there.
Amen. I want us to continue, we are looking at Peter, and if you want to have a referral of the scripture, that is still in the book of Acts, chapter two, verse fourteen to thirty-six, that is talking about Peter standing up to respond to the confusion of those people who were gathered. The crowd that was gathered were confused, because they even asked themselves, "Are these people drunk?" They were not drunk, and I want you to know that when you have been called into the ministry, do not let people struggle to respond to faith. When people were struggling and asking themselves questions, Peter stood and spoke to their lives. And the preaching that Peter did was spirit-empowered proclamation. And as my sister Scholar said, that Peter was a very timid man, but after being empowered and clothed, he was a very powerful man. So don't be afraid, this work has not been left to the five-fold ministry of prophets, apostles, pastors, teachers, and evangelists. Everyone has been given the power and the ability to go out and continue extending the kingdom of God. So don't be afraid, be the missionary that Jesus Christ has called you to be, because the power of God has not been limited to pastors and apostles and prophets alone. He has been given to everyone. And I want us to continue, remember the five points that Pastor talked about in that proclamation. Those points are very important. We must remember that Jesus is our Lord, we must respond in faith, we must also repent, we must encourage people about the promised gift of the Holy Spirit. So as we continue, Jesus is the main man accredited by God and should be the central message of all apostolic preaching. When preaching is done, all of us who are preaching, what is our preaching centered on? All the teachings and preaching should have Jesus as the heart of the message, heart of the message. You know, when you start preaching about yourself, you find a preacher comes, or somebody has been called in a fellowship, and then they start taking like thirty minutes discussing themselves, and then five minutes or ten minutes talking about Jesus Christ. You are not doing justice to the mission of God. Jesus Christ is the center of the message. And when Peter stood, that is where Peter central himself. And remember that the Holy Spirit is the promised helper, and he has been promised to all of us. I've said not limited to anyone. Is there anyone who want to add a point? Yes, Pastor, I can see you are smiling, something is so exciting.
Very exciting indeed. You know, Shikuku, when you talk about the apostles, and when we are preaching and we are talking about ourselves, I'm concerned about the kind of preachings and preachers that we have in the current world that we are living in. Because sometimes you see posters around the place, and they are talking about one person. And when you look at it, it is not Jesus Christ, it is not even the Holy Spirit. And I think from what you're saying and from what we see in scripture, Jesus should be the theme of our ministries. If there is a person that people should come and see in your crusades, in your church, and everything else that you do, it should be Jesus Christ, not you. Because left alone, Shikuku, left alone, you cannot even do anything. You can't even heal a flu.
Yes.
People will die. But when you have Christ, and when Christ is the center of your message, when people are coming to meet Christ, they will receive everything that they are looking for. Thank you for that wonderful reminder.
Amen. And just maybe to expand it further, we realize that the disciples had been working with Jesus Christ. They had firsthand interaction with Him. But when Christ is living them, Christ is giving them instruction, do not leave, wait until you are clothed. So, dear viewers, let's continue waiting to be clothed with the power from on high. And remember, when we are going out to do God's work, there are two responsibilities that preachers have. And when I talk about preachers, everyone who has been called to go and share Godfrey as two responsibilities. And these two responsibilities, number one is clear proclamation of the gospel, and that gospel must centered on Jesus Christ. And then number two is point people to Christ. And when you talk about some posters talking much about people, I don't know whether we are pointing people to ourselves. And you find that other believers also talks about, you know, if you really want a breakthrough in your life, come to our church, our pastor, our pastor. So that means that some people are also centering themselves on their pastors. What we are simply correcting and saying through the Holy Spirit guidance is that as we do God's work, let us proclaim a clear proclamation of the gospel centered on Christ, Jesus, and also let us to point people to Christ. Scholar, you seems to be so excited, and Godfrey is here, smiling. Godfrey, is there something that you have?
Okay, I'm smiling, because I see sometimes how we get derailed and forget that Christ should be the center of our message, and we push ourselves there as the center. I think it's a sort of derailment, which as believers, we should completely avoid, because Christ is the center of the message.
Sure.
Yes.
Amen.
Yes, and so, and you know, it bothers me if we can be so derailed as to even put ourselves on posters devoid of the Master Himself.
Sure.
Yes.
Amen. Yes?
Yeah, I was just adding that as we share the love of Christ or the message of Christ, and lead people or point them to Christ, we should also ensure that we lead them to being filled with the Holy Spirit.
Sure.
Because as people are born again, they are prepared for heaven. And for sure, if you're born again, you know you have an inheritance in heaven. And also, as they get filled with the Holy Spirit, we are also preparing them for Christian service, such that, yes, they've been born again, but they'll not just sit, they'll not take up the mandate of spreading the good news to the world.
Amen. Beatrice, do you have something to add?
Not really for now.
Okay. So as we continue, I want to say that when the gospel is proclaimed and people turn to Christ, then they should become a new prophetic community. That one you can refer to the book of Acts, chapter two, from verse forty-two to forty-seven, talking about the community of believers. And these people devoted themselves to apostles' teaching and breaking of bread. They were teaching, breaking bread, meeting each day, they became a community of Christ, they were united. And I'm saying that believers must be united for the common goal of serving God. Believers must be united for the common goal of serving God. An atmosphere where there is no unity and oneness, certain gates and opportunity to intimidate the work of Christ. So this is something that we all want to speak, that when we are talking about the church and our mandate, there is unity of purpose. We look at the disciples, and they were united, and those people were being added to the body of Christ, also joined and were being taught, they were breaking the bread, they were meeting every day, and they were united. So these are strong points that you need to remember. Yes, my sister Scholar?
Yeah, just to enforce that, that our witnessing to the world is not just about proclaiming the good news.
Yeah.
There is also so much on how we carry out ourselves as believers.
Sure.
Like, we should be that community that the people out there long to join. When they look at the church, when they look at how believers are there for one another, helping one another, they should also desire to be part of that family. But when believers, like we see today, turn to hatred, gossip, just doing things that are repelling people away from church, then in that case, no matter how much we proclaim the gospel and the good news of Jesus, we are preaching what we are preaching by our actions.
Wow.
Yeah, so we should be a good example, and something that they can model from us.
That is so powerful, Sister Scholar. You're talking about as we minister God's word, as we teach God's word, our actions and characters also minister to people. So don't refer to people just to listen to the word that you speak, but note your characters. As a minister of the gospel of God, all of us, once we have been enjoined in the community of Christ, we are speaking using our words and our characters. I don't know whether someone else or something, we want to come to the third part of this particular area? Yes, Pastor Joyce?
Okay, just briefly, you said as ministers, and I want to say as ministers and even as believers, don't wait until you become a minister to begin living as the community of Christ. The minute you say yes to the Lord, you need to start living as a community for Christ. Yes, thank you.
Amen. As we come to the end of that, I want to say that they became spirit-empowered witnesses in Jerusalem, ages before the sun and rain. So we see that the disciples were empowered. We want to look at the third sub-area of this particular topic. Remember, viewers, that we have been dealing with the Jewish mission, and we started with the Pentecost, then we went to the spirit-empowered, and right now we are talking about the powerful missionary prayer. I don't know whether you heard me right, the powerful missionary prayer. And that one you can refer to the book of Acts, chapter four, verse twenty-three up to thirty, at your own time, bringing the aspect of powerful missionary prayer. Dear viewers, as believers and as children of God, we cannot be effective enough if we do not involve ourselves into intense prayer. These disciples, as they were moving on with the missionary work, they understood the power of prayer. So let me ask my colleagues, if there is something they have under this powerful missionary prayer, they can add as we continue, the powerful missionary prayer.
Yeah, I would say that when the apostles made or had this chance to make a prayer before God, we see them making a prayer that was totally focused on the task that was ahead of them.
Sure.
They did not deviate like to pray for other worldly things or personal things, but we see them praying for God to give them boldness to preach the word. And they also prayed that God would perform miracles, signs, and wonders as they preached the word to the world.
So as I can hear from you, there are two particular things the disciples prayed for. Boldness to do God's work, and also for God to work miracles. So this should be desire of all of us, that God, as we do God's work, God should perform miracles through us. Pastor, I can see you are ready, there is something you want to add?
Yes, surprisingly, when they are praying for boldness and miracles, they had been taken in because of healing the cripple, I mean, healing the beggar.
Yes.
And they have been presented to authorities. You would expect them to pray that God rescue us. We are now under, you know.
Attacked and besieged.
Yes, we are under siege. So God, would you deliver us? Would you just cut off the chains? Would you come through for us? Why are you allowing us to be under siege while we were doing what you asked us to do?
Yeah.
But that is not their prayer, because they are not centered on themselves. They are not worried about their lives, they are worried about the kingdom of God. So they say, "Give us more boldness to preach this gospel, and even for signs and miracles to happen." So I have a lot to borrow from them.
Amen. Any other contribution?
Yeah, maybe just to add that when they meet that prayer, that God gives them more boldness and courage, we see now the second outpouring. Remember, the first outpouring was when they were in the upper room. And now we see here again the Holy Spirit coming dramatically and just filling up everybody that was in the room, and which also speaks to us as believers, that when you receive the Holy Spirit once, you just don't sit there like, "Now you've arrived," or "You've reached your destination." We still need the Holy Spirit to fill us once, again, and again, and again, and especially for those specific missions that God sends us out to fulfill.
Amen. I want to say that prayer in the book of Acts is mentioned thirty-three times, thirty-three times. And this tells me how the early church dedicated themselves through prayers. When we are talking about church and our mandate, as a church, prayers should be our first tool in making sure that we go forward with the gospel. with the gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ. They prayed missionary prayers more and more, and this teaches us that we should remain focused on the task that God has given to us. We need to bathe ourselves in intense prayer to fulfill God's mission as a church. So when we want, as Pastor said, that not only ministers, even all believers, and when we are speaking God's word here, we are speaking to all of us in whichever capacity that you are serving in the church, God has called all of us to do His work. And therefore, we need to make sure that we commit ourselves in powerful prayers. And remember, God answered them dramatically, just as Sister Scholar said, that there was another second outpouring. It means that when we dedicate ourselves to God, when we continue praying to God, the outpouring of the Holy Spirit of God will be experienced in our ministry. So when we are missing that kind of outpouring today in our churches, the question is, how much do we dedicate ourselves in prayers? How much?
Pastor Shikuku, just mentioned that, you know, when you labor so much in prayer, before you take up, take up a mission, if your labor is in prayer, you don't labor in the mission field. So please take time and labor in prayer and the word. And when you go out for the mission, even shadows, like we see Peter, Peter's shadow would heal people along the streets. So let our concentration be in the preparation, not in the mission itself. I remember when we started missions, when I joined missions, it was very exciting to hear that we are going to Mombasa. And you find out that, you know, the most exciting thing is to see the ocean. It's not even the mission of God. So that should not be our excitement. In fact, when we hear about a mission, we should begin to tremble, because that is a lot of work. And we go to a place where we will hide for hours, seeking the face of God. So that when we go there, you know, just our presence there makes the difference because we are carrying the kingdom of God. Amen.
Amen. Dear viewers, we want to bring our, our today's session to an end. There are a number of things that we've, we've covered, and we shall continue covering because we are still going on with the book of Acts. And remember, we are talking about the Jewish mission. We've seen other areas under that particular area. And we are just excited that God has been speaking to us. I want to ask each and every one of us to speak of a parting shot, what you have understood with the three areas that we've talked about. And our last area should be the spirit guided decision, that even as we make decisions in the church, we have to seek the Spirit of God to guide us. And this will help us to make the right decision. So we shall start with my sister Betris, just to give her, give us her parting shot.
I would just say that when we receive, we should always be yearning to continue being filled with the power of the Holy Spirit, because that is the only way we can be able to, to defend the word of God. And also, when we get, when we are clothed with the power of the Holy Spirit, we will receive the boldness. And therefore, we will behave like the way Peter behaved on the day of Pentecost. When people were accusing them of being drunk, he was able to stand and defend the word of God. That is my take.
Amen.
Thank you. I would say that as believers, yes, we've been given the Holy Spirit. And it, as we've seen, it inspires us for mission work and gives us that boldness and courage. But along the way things come, persecution comes. When you read the full book, the book of Acts, the portions that we are covering today, we see persecution coming upon the apostles. We see even at one point, there was opposition from within them when Ananias and Saphira decided to lie to the, to the Holy Spirit. And we see that the Holy Spirit of God is this powerful force that helps us overcome all those challenges that we'll face along the way. So let us be courageous, let us be bold enough, because we have the Holy Spirit of God. He will take us through the hard times, He will be with us even when the smooth times comes. As we see, when there was a time the church will enjoy a lot of peace, no persecution, and at that time, we still need the Holy Spirit of God. So He's that package that comes to assist us and to help us in all times of our mission, of our mission work.
Amen. Yes, Godfrey?
Thank you. I liken accepting Christ to joining God's army. And as long as we, we follow, we follow the footsteps of the Commander in Chief, who is Jesus Christ, no enemy can stand against us.
Amen.
I see after what happened during the day of Pentecost, what we have read, the disciples asking for boldness. And we see miracles, and we see wonders. That is what is characterized by our work with Christ.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you so much. My, my parting shot is that we receive the Holy Spirit not to fit in, in a ministry, not to be like any other person, but to preach the gospel. Amen.
Amen. Dear viewers, we've been talking about the Jewish mission under the main particular topic of church and our mandate. And in my parting shot, I want to say that when we remain united as a church, we can overturn the darkest, the darkest kingdom of Satan and reach as many people as possible. And I want to say that in the presence of God, there is no drama. We can never desire to lie, just as it happened to Ananias and Saphira, because it is still part of what we were talking about. You need to know that whenever you lie in the presence of God, you will be exposed. So as we talked about ministering the word of God with our words and with our actions, this one will take us very far. And I also want to bring to our attention that even when it comes to the choosing of leaders in the church, we need to seek the guidance of the Holy Spirit. We look at the disciples. There was a confusion of the contribution of the things that were being collected. And they had to seek God, and God gave them ability to choose men, seven deacons who were spirit-filled. And this tells us how God is so loving. So we have talked about much today, and I want to, just to continue reading the book of Acts, because we are still continuing with it. In our next session, we shall continue with the book of Acts. Dear viewers, you cannot be a member of God's army if you have not made a decision to give your life to Jesus Christ. So if you are there and you have never given your life to Jesus Christ, this could be a better opportunity for you to make a decision just to commit yourself, repent your sins, and then join this great army, and then be empowered with the Holy Spirit of God. And I will lead you in prayer. And before that, I want to remind you of our church program, our church programs, dear viewers. We are back to church, and we are very excited that we are physically back to church. As Gospel Centers International Church Central, we have three services that we are running. Our first service is running from seven-thirty, second service is nine-thirty, and third service from eleven-thirty. Choose one of the three services, join us to do the fellowship. Our Sunday service is being aired online from nine. And then we also have youth service being aired from three P M. And then at night from eight, we have what we call Sunday Family Service. And this coming Sunday, we shall have Lord's Table. This is a program that you should not miss. And then Saturdays, we have what we call Battle Axe Fellowship. And this coming Saturday, there will be a program. So dear members, those are our programs. Join us next Thursday as we continue with the book of Acts. Allow me to pray for you who want to just give your life to Jesus Christ as we also bring this program to a closure. Dear Father, we come before this wonderful evening. Thank you for speaking to us and pointing to us, Jesus Christ, Your Son, who is the center of the message that is being preached. Lord, there is a member who has been, there is a viewer who has been watching us and has not made a decision. I want to pray for this man or this woman who is willing, Godfather, to commit themselves unto You, repenting their sins, that they will join this great army. God, there was an outpouring of the Holy Spirit in Jerusalem, and we saw also another one that happened when the disciples of Jesus were going on with the work. We continue to pray for the same to happen today in the church. We are talking about the church and our mandate. Lord, may the church be endowed with the power, be clothed with the power from on high. Lord, let there be outpouring of the Holy Spirit as You continue to use each and every believer to extend the kingdom of God through the preaching of the gospel, empowered with the power of the Holy Spirit of God. Let miracles and signs follow us, O God. As it happened to Peter and John, as they were approaching the beautiful gate, finding a man at this beautiful gate, Peter said, "That silver and gold I have not, but that which I have, God, You have given us, this gift of the Holy Spirit, Father, to use and do Your work." I pray for each and every listener and all of us panelists that as we continue doing Your work, as we continue with the book of Acts, God minister to us as we minister to Your people. We thank You and we honor You. This evening, Father, bless us, even as we meet next Thursday, in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, we pray believing and trusting. Amen. Amen. Shalom, shalom, shalom. God bless you.